When did it work its way? John Mavel took it over. Okay.
Yeah, you're in charge.
I would like to call to order a planning commission meeting. It's on the 17th of July and Thursday. It's 12:00, 13:00. The first order of business is to establish a quorum. There are three people here. Two are statutory, one's a citizen, I'm the citizen. And so that's a quorum. And now I would like to see if I should administer an oath to... Are you Timothy Lutz? Okay, should I?
Yeah, Mr. Lutz. I assume he's gonna say something here.
Are you gonna stand please and say that you swear to tell the truth as you know? Okay, thank you. I was gonna say, so let me down, but it just seems like he doesn't say it anymore. All right, next is the disposition of the minutes. Seems like... The minutes are attached. Paul is particularly interested in the comments on Graham Drive.
I just, I wasn't tracking that location from the discussion that has been clarified.
Okay. Any other matters?
No, I mean, we accept the minutes of July 3rd.
Second, anybody?
No. I think she captured all my detailed concerns. Some of the manufacturing, they say it was zoning.
Okay, so I would say that I seconded it. All those opposed? Minutes are approved as well. We have the first case, Timothy Lutz, 57 East First Street, The Plains, a lot split. And for those of you who are interested in why we are doing this all day, we are the city and The Plains is outside the city. He's within the three mile limits. Little bit of public education. East First Street in The Plains. Is there anything that I should ask the city first and then ask Mr. Lutz?
Let me explain this one. It'd be in the, one, two, maybe the fifth page of your packet. You can see a little scenario I put together there, the revision of the ordinance. There was an ordinance on this piece of property for a lot split on October 16th of 2006. So basically what I've done here is you can see the strike-throughs are the numbers that were on the ordinance back then, and the bold yellow would be the revisions that they're requesting now. In essence, this is a flag lot that has a house on the front part that was broke off, again, eight years ago. There was a 30-foot access corridor provided to the lot to the rear back in 2006. And at the time, the property was undeveloped, so that would have been, at that time, 90 foot was required for a commercial space because they did not know what the commercial use was going to be back there. Now it's 30 feet is the required width of the access drive going back there. The applicant's requesting to diminish that down to 14 feet or 16 feet?
16.
Down to 16 feet, so that the 14 feet can be given to the house and give them a little bit more of a side yard. It's an established drive going to an established storage facility behind it, both in the same common ownership at this time. So, again, the revision of the ordinance that I proposed would be basically what would be written to give to Debbie to go to council. This would go to city council as well.
And the yellow is the amendments that you put in place?
Yes, I can clarify. Back in 2006, the variances were for a, to permit a lot area of approximately 18,250 square feet or 20,000 square foot is permitted minimum. This would be for the commercial part to the rear. That didn't exactly happen that way when they did this back eight years ago, so the numbers aren't really important then. It was off a little bit because it was an estimate. It was not a hard survey back then. But the applicant's requesting that approximately 19,297 square feet or 20,000 square foot is permitted minimum, and a lot frontage width at the street of 30 feet, which is required or was permitted before, now wanting 16.08 feet where 30 feet is the permitted minimum. And then the other one they never included back then, I don't know why, is from ACC 210406A4, the maximum depth-to-width ratio is greater than 3 to 1. So the commercial property is requesting three variances, which it had before. One for the width of the access, one for the size of the lot, and one for the 1 to 3 ratio. The residential property, which is a residual on the front, it's asking for a variance of approximately 17,424 square feet where 20,000 square feet is permitted minimum, and a lot frontage width of the street is 89.78 feet where 90 is required. So it's just, basically, it's there. It's at 90 feet. So everything here required, the entire property required these same variances eight years ago, just the numbers are being changed at this request, so.
So we're seeing a shift over of the frontage for the commercial part, which is a mini storage, I think you told me.
Correct.
From 30 feet to 16.
Correct.
And is that paved right now, that frontage? I see a little stippling on the...
There's a ortho photo in the monitor part.
Oh, is there? Didn't make it back to you on the photo.
I believe it's gravel, but Tim, you can speak to that.
Okay.
Do you operate the business as well? Do you operate the business as well?
Okay, yes, that's a yes, okay.
I believe, and I don't know, but I mean, 30 foot used to be the standard.
30 foot was the standard. Ryan used to work with Bob Eichenberg on this. The 30 foot was the standard for undeveloped, if there's access to get back in case there was a subdivision to be built with five lots or more of residential is the reason, the 30 foot. Code required 90, but because of the size of the lot, 30 kinda was the number that was adopted.
Not for more than five. The 30 foot was a private access easement kind of defined.
But that would be for residential. That would be for residential.
Correct.
Yeah, but the assumption, commercial would be less?
Commercial was 90.
90, so it'd be more.
90. Then they received the variance back in '06 for it to go from 90 to 30.
Okay.
Now they're requesting to go from...
30 to 16.
30 to 16. Correct.
And this is actually to give some side setback to the house?
Correct.
Any trouble with large, like, people bring things to storage units sometimes in U-Hauls?
Tim, why don't you stand up there, please?
Yeah, why don't you state your name for the record, too?
Timothy Lutz.
To follow up on that question, so you don't have large trucks, semi-trucks, because it's really mini storage.
It's a mini storage, yeah. No large semi-trucks, if you're thinking of 48-foot trailer, but there are U-Hauls go back and forth, and U-Hauls had no problem getting access to it currently. Because right now, where the property line is actually split, I'm using the, there is an existing fence line there right now.
Okay.
So it's actually, the line to the, I guess that'd be to the west, is actually a fence line.
Okay. How many storage units are there, actually?
There are 72. Two buildings.
72?
72 units.
Okay, 72 units. That sounds like quite a few, I guess. That's why I was asking in terms of traffic, you know? 16 foot in the way the other could, you know, I don't think you have traffic down there, but I don't know.
You can see the path.
Yes, yeah.
Was it because it was established as a parcel? Why it's not like a transfer between adjacent adjoining owners tied continuously and continuously? Is it because it was a separate business entity?
Why it's here?
Yes.
I brought it here because it came forward as an ordinance or a variance before. Yeah, technically, I guess, if we sit here and say that, basically, the house itself giving it the land was, is no problem, because it's continuous, same property, same ownership. The primary reason is the access going to the commercial part, and since it requested a variance eight years ago, and I don't see where anything's changed, that I felt it needed to clarify that. Council's wanted to approve that variance for 30 feet. I think it'd be your planning commission and council's responsibility to approve 16 feet as well.
So this'll be a recommendation to...
Correct.
To council.
Yes.
Any other questions? The access to the house is on the same path or it's separated?
Separate.
Okay. I can't see it on the ortho.
I can't either. Maybe.
They didn't, the driveway was not drawn, and it's, if you look at it, it's all the way to, I guess it would be the east side. It's the garage.
Okay. Oh, that's the gravel driveway you said, right?
Oh, the driveway.
Over here, yeah.
Yeah, it's up on the north. I guess it's north, northwest.
Far side of the, away from the other access point. So in one sense, if this was zoning, we'd say this is increased non-conformity in general. But on the other side, what you're saying is that because it's now, that flag lot has been actually...
Developed.
Developed as something that we know it is an entity and not a problem entity, then this would be something that is not as, you know, an unknown, as you were saying.
And I think we're still safe, because if there was to be, let's say someday they tore this down to build houses back there, that would require lot splits, which would come back through us, and then we could sit here and say, well, no, it's always 16-foot access to get back there for residential-type development, if that ever happened down the road. So I think we're protected.
But this is less than...
Yeah, and there's a road.
Yeah, how many, how many?
Is that road built, Castle Run? Looks like it is.
Look on the ortho zone.
It's planted, I think.
On the other hand, it's only half an acre here, so how much can you put there?
But look at how many houses there are. Look at the top.
In The Plains, yeah.
That's the access to the apartments. I don't know why it goes, they show that going in through there.
But there's a lot of open space there.
You mean that road does not?
It's just a drive. Castle Run Road, is that the access?
No, that is adjacent.
That's an adjacent drive?
And that's for the development?
Yeah, if he ever wanted to.
I would think that they'd have to improve that roadway for something in the future.
Most likely, yeah.
But if you look at the density of the settlement, okay.
I don't know, I guess I feel, I mean, it's the property owner who, and it's his own business, and he's just trying to kind of protect your home.
Give it a little bit to the house, because it's, the property line's based right on the house.
Who owns the development to the northwest of the, who's developing it? The one that is served by Castle Run Road?
Tony Farian.
Okay.
The apartments to the...
The apartments, yes.
Yeah, how many, does he have a plot of this?
And it looks like it's one, two, three, four, six units, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And it looks like, nine, two, six, twenty-four, blah, 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 30, 36.
There's no zoning in The Plains.
Oh, I just wondered about it. It's not, it's not Mr. Lutz's problem, but...
They still have to come to us eventually for the split down. I don't know how many acres are there. And, see, that is, Plains does have its own septic system, so they could actually pack things in there.
What's interesting in this, he gains lot frontage and with, with your proposal, with a proposal.
Yeah.
It's just under 90.
The reason being is, this was what was presented eight years ago. This page here is what was presented eight years ago.
It wasn't accurate.
And that was not exactly what was done.
So the flag, the lower portion of the flag was moved differently?
And it just, when they got out and did the actual survey, I guess it didn't lay out exactly as they started. Back then, it was a proposal. As you see, it wasn't a hard survey. So all the numbers were based on a proposal. Mr. Lutz has gotten a hard survey to show us the actual true numbers.
So really, the true issue is the, the big change here is the lot frontage.
Of the residential property.
The residential 30 to 16.
Commercial.
The commercial. The access to the commercial's been reduced.
Yes, correct.
A little bit, less than half.
But that's the only thing that's changed. As Mr. Lutz said, there's even a fence there currently, so.
So it's actually been functioning as that width to start with.
Right.
Visually, you're out there, yes, exactly. Visually, it looks like it's already been separated.
Any other questions?
No. I have a motion. I would move to recommend approval of the variances requested for the Timothy Lutz 0 East First Street, The Plains, Ohio, minor subdivision.
I'll second that.
Hey, Alan, favor.
Hi.
Post 30.
There you go.
Thank you.
So the next step, of course, is to get the recommendation to council. Council will draw it up.
Yes, I'll, if you look at the old ordinance that I got my chicken scratch on, and what I, how I changed it, I imagine Debbie will write it up just like this and just change. The only thing, it is after your name on it. Before it was Stephen Adella, so.
And I hope you don't need anything till September or so.
I bet they did advise him of that.
They go on recess in August. Counsel.
Oh, I was just thinking, we were going on recess.
Jeff will be around.
We're all going on recess.
It's all going on recess. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is Title 23, zoning code court or discussion?
These are communications.
Yes, under communications. Last time, I believe, the mayor asked you to bring in those items that were previously held as requiring a permit. I remember the noise, the light, the odor, that were in the old code.
The zones, manufacturing.
And the manufacturing zone performance standards?
Oh, I see. Look, when we were discussing that often, the different...
Yes, I do not have that for you today. I apologize.
Actually, I totally forgot myself, so.
Well, I'm sorry, but I remembered after we left that each of those things is currently permitted by EPA, so you can't discharge air pollution unless you, as a business, unless you have a manufacturing business. Likewise, the water, over and above the city requirements, you'd have requirements. And I think that is why they were no longer necessary. But he may still have, being an inquiry mind, want to know that.
Well, I'd be curious. I wouldn't think that some of the light manufacturing is occurring.
I will get that to you, and I apologize, I just completely forgot about that.
Oh, it's no biggie, but I just wanna, you know, I don't think it is already redundant because of EPA unless they get, weaken some more, and then, who knows?
I was back, and he said in the office this morning, I know there's something I'm supposed to have, and I can't remember.
He's way too young to have a memory now.
Well, he might have sleep deprivation with the newborn.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes, I remember.
Nancy, with light manufacturing, like, things that are occurring, for example, on Columbus Road, East net kitchen, they sure not governed by the EPA.
No, but anything that would be in the manufacturing zone per se now, the one that would be the residual zone? I mean, I thought we were going light manufacturing as an overlay or something like that permitted when the size of the parcel was big enough. At least that's the way I envisioned it. And then the rest being manufacturing, manufacturing, also known as heavy.
So, right, correct. So except for light manufacturing, you say every other form would be permitted by EPA?
Yeah. I mean, you know, so I'm not 100% sure, but I do think that if they were, let's say, burning some materials, they would have to...
No burning in the city anyway.
So what she means?
Inside.
Inside?
Inside, yeah.
Like incinerating?
Yeah, okay.
Animal bodies or something?
Stabbing tires, I don't know.
No, no, I was thinking of something that could be potentially hazardous, like they do at OU.
That's engineering, that sucks.
No, no, that's right across from everything, every break, it was odorific.
I guess, I always think so much as an overlay, except trying to blend where the B3 starts and stops in terms of manufacturing. You know, the dialogue I've had with some people, saying, okay, manufacturing is assembly and, you know, industrial assembly, and I said, okay, that makes sense. And they said, well, you know, we've got sandwich artists that assemble a sandwich. Is that, is that the same thing? You know, and I said, no, I don't think so. But it comes down to, again, the post of trial, of course, is this is global cooling, that wanted to move across the street in a B-zone, and saying, we do, we do assembly, we do manufacturing. We're not casting the parts there. We're buying the parts in from other places that come in and they assemble them. So, you know, when does that, when does that become manufacturing, you know? That's an example that's come and gone.
Light manufacturing.
That's light manufacturing. But that's, okay, that means we'd modify our light manufacturing, kind of blend into the B3 zones.
Again, we don't have that designation now, and I think that what I was thinking we might be seeking is to define heavy manufacturing, light, and emitting, extractive.
I would not, I would not do that third thing you said casually, unless you absolutely certainly won't be subject to questions.
I think the State Building Code actually calls out between light manufacturing and hazardous manufacturing, is basically what we're talking about. And they, they have definition for the two different ones. So if it's a hazardous materials-type project, so we can easily pull those uses out of the, again, it's back to that little chart that I put together a long time ago that showed all the different uses.
But I'm saying that we don't just discern a difference. An industrial zone is an industrial zone, and it could go with any one of those three.
I thought Paul found it last time and showed us where we had all three zones defined.
We haven't defined.
But not located.
Right. The only place those definitions are mentioned in our code is in the definitions section. Maybe at one point they existed in some iteration of our code before it's been rewritten several times, so maybe at one point we did have light manufacturing, manufacturing, heavy or extractive. I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I was puzzling about, that have we left it behind? In other words, did the code move certain direction and left these definitions behind? And if they did, what, where were they placed originally at one point? I mean, did we, did we make that definition, just throw it in there, saying that's what we have?
It was 1969. I think that you'd have to go look at the map. Was there a light manufacturing zone identified on the ground in 1969 in the first map?
I don't remember ever seeing the first map. I guess that's...
I think they've got one, maybe you have.
I've heard that, but that we've got it, but we don't.
I know when they had a map in the, in the, what, 80s or 90s, when I first started, those were tatted maps that were, they had barely enough to hold on to. And I think that the one that Pearson had on his wall was all taped together at the time. It's probably still there, taped together.
No, it's not.
Unless they sent it to the Historical Society.
But that, the question arises, is, does that, I don't remember seeing any incremental manufacturing in that one in the 90s.
I don't either.
So that, you know, so...
If you make a little effort, you know, sort of a best effort of about 20 minutes to look for?
I have, more than once.
Okay.
And I know which one you're talking about, and we took it down, and it just, whether it's down in the basement or if it fell apart and got accidentally thrown away, I do not know, but I have not been able to locate it.
It's not very tragic. We just want to know if there was a station.
I think that you can track down the old code and see if it, if it bridges from point A to point B. In other words, definitions bridge.
Definitely have copies of the old code. They're all in our office, yeah.
A little blue or gray or beige or?
All of them.
I guess I, I'm not so concerned with what it may or may not have been in the past. I think we have an opportunity here to look at the present and future.
Right.
Okay, what I was hearing is this was probably performance-based segment of code at one time, and I know that's been discussed before about trying to go back to a performance-based code. I'd be interested to see what we did before, just so we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Or maybe we didn't do it before, it was just on paper.
That's a very good possibility.
My guess is it's already kind of done, because the B3, what I'd be considering is light industrial, light manufacturing, where our I-zone or M-zone, those are industrial-type uses. So, I mean, yeah, some of them are kind of obsolete in today's world with blacksmiths and foundries and bags and carpet cleaning and such, but, you know, it calls out flammable liquids and, you know, underground storage tanks and junkyards. Those would be your industrial zone, so that, I think it's kind of already done, you know?
Well, except that our, our current zoning has, like, our parks zoned out, you know?
Yeah, and I just think it's probably better to have everybody aware of it. You know, I've said that before, and I know it's boring, but I think that everybody should know what's possible in the zone, and if it's a light manufacturing possible, then we should include it, so the mayor doesn't feel queasy or somebody else feel queasy about a specific use of the land.
Okay, yeah.
And I always think about, I don't know if Paul said it, but I, it made sense to me, even though you have a light manufacturing going on, if they wash down the lab tables that noon, you could get a slug of selenium or something else into the waste, into the water stream. I mean, you know, so, but it isn't going to be controlled, and isn't something we would specify, but it's not without its challenges.
Well, again, you're, yourself are saying that a lot of this is legislated already. I mean, even going outside the door is already covered by the EPA and various organizations. I mean, you can't, whether it's the tanks underneath the ground or whatever. In fact, when you compare what, I know when I work at the university, usually the chemistry and the monitoring of chemicals has chemicals actually less than industry. Industry has usually more quantity, but they also have a few more regulations that follow that, whereas in academic lab, you can have a hodgepodge of things there that are quite toxic.
Right.
They've been getting better at that, I know that, since I've left, you know, environment health and safety at the university's been working hard.
But that wasn't causal, was it, since you left? They got better?
No, no. I think it was every time they found a pick of gas that they're freaked out, you know, because it's gonna explode.
Excuse me for joking. All right, so where do we go from here?
We still need Stimson.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say that I heard, you know, really positive things about East State Street from several people. They liked your extra work, so congrats.
I've heard both ways, so thanks.
You probably heard from the landlords.
Well, again, I think some of...
That is the communication. I don't know if we can do it here, but related to East State Street, there will be a public release today of the selection of the alternative one, the diverging diamond for underneath, beneath the interchange there. We'll work towards applying for funding in September for a 2016 project. That will include the pedestrian enhancements again. Where we can, maybe not always to scale, get a sidewalk on the southern side, but that isn't gonna get me pretty little shrubs and trees and things, so.
You still have to have line of sight issues on that, too.
So would we wait for Mr. Sumney to come with the lot? He's got a little bit of a model to come up against, you know? You did a good job the last time, better than I did.
Okay.
Anyway, was, and I'm not, and I would also clarify that I'm not wedded to the idea of an overlay that was there. I'm sitting in this chair, and overlay must be something that you, the chair exudes.
How do you, how do the three of you see us making change? I know, Mayor, while when you did yours on, you did a really good job of kind of evaluating what the comprehensive plan said, what's happened, and also maybe things that have changed or things that are missing from it. Do the three of you see the best route as to, to physically edit the text of those sections of the plan, and then have the five of you agree that those are the right way to do it, or public hearing or something, and then forward that up to city council and ask that that be adopted as a revision to our comprehensive plan?
I would think also, maybe that would be okay, but my opinion is that we should also amend the B3 to include light manufacturing.
Right, okay.
So it's absolutely clear that every, that it could be done, if you had, if you made certain parameters. I may be the only one that feels that way. I just think everybody should know what's possible on a piece of land.
Could John and I try to write language that would evaluate that and bring that up for the, either the next meeting in August, perhaps?
Yes, okay.
Two meetings? Second meeting in August?
We're both gone, half of it.
That's true, right.
Okay. What was your concept, Paul, about this?
I agree, other than we don't have a light industrial zone, so would this be defining a light and a heavy manufacturing zone if we're doing zoning changes at the same time? Or was that just the language that says you're gonna add under B3 to include a light industrial that isn't?
To allow?
Isn't a zone now.
That's, that's what I'm taking from Nancy.
Okay.
Well, I, you know, and I'm ambivalent because I don't know, because the lots, many Well, I, you know, and I'm ambivalent because I don't know, because the lots, many lots are too small to really, of the B three, to accommodate that. So maybe there would have to be some bulk controls for the light manufacturing, which could also occur in, in the manufacturing zone as well, right?
Okay.
It could happen, and I'm not, you know, I just, I'd like to see.
Stricter or less than we are, because the bulk controls are minimal right now. I mean, there's.
Right, but I meant in terms of area and setbacks.
Adding some to it.
Yeah.
Because currently, the, the M-zone is, doesn't have any setback, yeah.
Well, I was thinking mainly about the B three, because that tends to be especially close to the neighborhoods. I'd like to hear what Mr. Sumney has to say next time. Should we send him an invitation?
Maybe.
Guess what?
I don't think he has any M-zones, except, well, he does, right off the.
Right.
Stimson, uh, where?
Yeah. Stimson seems to be ground zero for sure.
How is the Athens mold machine? What is that?
That's a.
Jeff wants to talk.
That's him.
Just, just a question about the light manufacturing. Would that include something like an artist studio that, say, this painter has a kiln?
I wouldn't think so. You better ask the zoning inspector.
I, I think that's the things we, we need to look at, you know? That question's asked of me before, with the landowners, for example, would that be considered light manufacturing if they're making the frames? They're bringing their frames in, so they're just assembling, so the answer is, you were saying that would be light, because it's, but if they were actually be milling the frames and doing such, would that be heavy? But wood's not really a hazardous material, so, you know, it's, you gotta sit and figure it all out.
Yeah, well.
I mean, if you look at it as like a business, and they say, okay, it's a professional business, an artist, you know, they could do it in theory, they could do it in a B one zone, or even if they don't take up that much floor space, or R one zone.
I'd say.
You know, so it's, yeah, okay, so when does it become hazardous? When the smoke comes out of the chimney and it smells like, you know, heavy metals or something?
When there's a semi parked in front of the house.
That's a good, good sign that something's going on.
Yeah, that's what happened adjacent to me, Broadway.
On the other hand, my concept of where we're going with this, and it's a little bit different, is that what I'd wanted to see is kind of like us to look to the comprehensive plan and then look back at what the B three zones are. I was actually more concentrating on feathering out the B three zones to manufacturing, but also in the other direction, saying, because we had, what, the B three on East State Street is different than the B three on Stimson.
It was some similarity.
And I wasn't thinking so much of overlap, but, you know, flavors of B three. We have a B two D, we have a B two. Not a lot of B two out there either. You can tell, that's actually kind of disappeared over time. But maybe we should be looking and saying, okay, so do we, do we have a B three Stimson versus a B three Richland? And, and, and the bulk controls are, are in that mix. I know we have, I'd have to go back and look at the sign arts. I think there's a section of signs that says no off-site signs except for here, here, and here.
Correct.
There's like three sections of the city or four sections of the city where you can actually have an off-site sign, you know, and, and that's very specific, you know, because I obviously wanted to do something, and not that I'm sure what they were trying to do. Reading that sign order is almost.
Move it out.
Well, you know what I mean. Okay, so when we start saying, we want a certain image, we want a certain feel for each air corridor. You know, this is more work, though, because when you get down to it, you'd have to look and say, okay, what's the footprint of all the lots there? What's the manufacturer, the businesses there, and what do we want it to look like?
But we want it before December.
No, we, well, we want to keep moving forward on it. How's that sound?
And I, I think what the mayor says is correct in terms of, also the artistic component. You know, there's a lot of that that's kind of designed that we haven't really addressed, and that one is going to really be a harder nut to crack, and to use a cliche.
Well.
But I'm going to argue, East State Street, citywide, west, not Washington, but what street did you do?
I did West Union.
West Union and Columbus Road are more alike. They don't really have so much of a, of an area they serve, and, at least on the outer reaches. And then Stimson and, and Richland are very much more, there's a clientele that would use some of the businesses that are walkable.
Walkable, have residences and businesses.
Probably because of the students as much as anything else, but I think so. There's really three types at least.
And if we really want to get extensive on this, we start, you know, re-up the B two D, extend it down to Carpenter, extend it down to West Union. I mean, if you start saying, you know, I was looking at the corridor at that time. I know, yeah, it's.
It came up because of the armory.
Yeah.
And what the future use of the armory would be.
It could be a pod.
Well, okay, well, you still require parking for it, and you, and you'd need commercial parking because it's in a different zone. That's always been a restriction for that, everything north of West State Street and East State Street, I quote. So, you know, but you look at the, you look at the corridor between, where Bromley Hall, I forget where the B two D stops. I thought it stopped at Congress. I may be wrong on that.
State, oh, no. It doesn't stop at State. Isn't that the northern border?
I'm thinking of the western border, going down.
Congress.
It goes on Middle Street, I think.
Congress, partly, and it dogs in and out.
On Congress?
Yes.
Okay, what I'm thinking about if we extended it down West Union, when does West Union change in flavor? Doesn't change, really change to somewhere about, probably Depot or Factory. And even Factory, it's still there. There's still a B two D feel to that.
Isn't it built out pretty much?
Well, the university has a big footprint there. You have to look and see, some of those buildings eventually have to be, you know, churned over. I mean, right now, we have where the old Hop Sings or Lamb's Garden is being built.
Boy, it's, it's really hard to get a parking place in that area, but I'm not sure B two D would solve it.
They're parking on either side. I have parking on both sides of this street.
I know, that's what I mean. Yeah, there's quite a bit.
Oh, you did share this morning that they're going to be reinvigorating that central classroom that is also on West Union.
Yeah, and again, in theory, they don't fall into our zoning, but they're supposed to, and how do we?
They're supposed to inform you, right?
Yeah. Us, yes. So you look and say the, what is it, West Sau, West Union?
Wusak.
Wusak, West Union something or other, okay, whatever.
That's street, Office Center. It's actually just an acronym.
West Union Street Office.
Okay.
Complex or.
But look, Graymar's been redone and it's been upgraded, but some of those houses over there, pretty bad off.
Foster Place is not bad.
That's Graymar, right.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah, well, they used to call it Graymar. I don't know.
Okay. But you, you know, then they always have that clear area by Factory and between Factory and, was it Roberts, I think, or is it Moore? I always forget which one's which.
That's Roberts. Moore runs Harlow.
So, you know, again, I don't, it's not like I have a lock on this, but again, I, my concept was that we'd actually start changing, you know, we were talking about overlays, but this would be a concept of a B three overlay in one sense, or a whole new jurisdiction. But again, I, it's a lot more work. What I gave you and I talked about was really the preliminary thing, because I really haven't sat down and said, okay, who owns the land and what, what does a property look like? What does the footprint of that building on the property look like as well? Because right now, you know, Mr. Loughlin's just built a new lottery building right there, and he still has plans for a residential on the other end of it, I think.
And he still has additional space that he built in for some other future.
Yes.
Business or whatever.
So, you know, there are progressions that are going, it's going to progress out. It may be built out, but we still have some flat area there, and we still have some areas that could be, you know.
I guess I'd like to see, I was especially interested from six eighty-two onward, because that was the one where there was more options for, for the light manufacturing.
You might get a split corridor, is what I hear.
Well, I mean, that's what he did. When he reported it, it was split.
Yes, the transition would be out there.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's what you mean, six eighty-two out to the.
Right, to the edges.
But that, but that would, okay, that's a different zone. That's, that's also B three out there, and some manufacturing, I believe it's manufacturing as well, but that, looking to see if I'm correct when I say that.
And some residential.
But you know, we really have, the inner part of your, of your corridor, we have very little control over what's going to happen there.
It could be, it will be renovated eventually. Something will be rebuilt, you know, the question is, is it, what's in fit? And we've always run across the B one issue on the, the lower of West Union where Smiling Skull is, because technically, what, Smiling Skull is limited by being in B one, I believe. Same thing with the, with the cat stand there.
I'm calling it by definition.
So we have, we have limitations of what's in.
Third one in the past year.
Yeah, so we have that. So we have a lot of, but I think that the first, the first order would probably be just to try and get, however we put it in, the light manufacturing.
Okay.
Because other than that, I mean, I'm starting to watch this, and we're going to say, oh, my goodness, it'll be March next year before you have time to get it done, so if you start with that, then you come back and we can, we can start with the ordinance, and do not touch the one about excavation unless you know the implications of what you're doing.
Extraction.
Extraction, yeah, extraction. I mean, it seems like it's useless, but you don't know.
Okay.
I can't remember is my problem. So is that, are we in agreement on that, if they should?
I think we'll allow the planner to take a stab. I'm not so sure that I'm sold yet. I'm not touching extractive manufacturing, but.
Oh, I just, well, I don't, I mean.
Yeah, we're going to take a stab at something.
Light manufacturing is the focus.
Give it to the planning commission, and then we'll see if we're in the right direction and if.
And when the cameras roll off, I will tell her what the history is.
Now, don't do that to her. Don't beat up my administration.
No, that's just all right. It's all right. I wouldn't be beating up them. I'd be telling them. Okay, so are we done with corridor discussions? We need Mr. Sumney here to give a song and dance, and then we'll be ready to move. All right, now we'd like a report from the city planner, if he has such a thing.
I have a few things. The, the Go Bus contract is up for renewal, and it looks like there's three transit organizations have submitted for review on that. Charlene and myself and a few representatives from HAPCAP are going to be reviewing those and then trying to figure out who to award that contract to. The applicants are, I think, Barron's, Greyhound, and.
Megabus?
Lakefront.
Lakefront.
Thank you, Charlene. Unless there's maybe one or two that haven't arrived yet, I'm not sure. I thought, I thought the closing was either yesterday or today. I'm hoping, because they're big, they're big applications. We're going to be reviewing those on Monday, June, or Monday, July twenty-eighth, I think, is the date on that. The Historic Preservation Commission will be getting training with the Ohio Historic Preservation Office the first Tuesday in August. I think that's Tuesday, August fifth or sixth. I can't remember the date. Some representatives from Columbus will be coming into town, and we're going to give them, give him or them, I'm not sure how many we're going to have yet, some of the tour of, a brief walking tour of some of the historic sites and buildings in town. And then we're going to do a training later on that evening, I think, five thirty P.M. It is geared towards the Historic Preservation Commission, but if there are planning commission members that are interested, I'd be happy to arrange to have you sit in for the training. I think, Mayor, while you were, you're going to try to make that.
Yeah, I think it's on my calendar, but I have.
I'm going to try to invite, let, at least the Planning and Development Committee on Council know about it. If they're interested, they can come.
Okay, looking for resources there.
I think that's all I have.
Essence of Athens?
Essence of Athens, oh, my goodness, Mayor. Those should be delivered tomorrow. They are in transit from the printer. I expect to have them. And if they arrive tomorrow at a reasonable time, I will deliver a stack up to Debbie Walker at council to distribute to the council representatives as well as to the mayor's office.
We'll come up with some good recommendations.
And I will have copies for the planning commissioners at the next regular meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
John?
I don't have anything. We have not had any BZA cases in the last month, and we have no pending cases for the planning commission in the upcoming couple of weeks, so.
Maybe we can get it done.
I have been basically approached by both the reappointees for the BZA, Joan Kornansky and Lisa Carson. I believe she called up. Joan sent me an email. They want to be reappointed, so we forward that to the council for reappointment.
Okay.
For advice and consent, right?
I think they actually have yes or no action on that.
That's what I mean, advice and consent.
Okay, yeah. So that's what's going on there.
Okay, well, that'll be done by council, and then, you know, there's a few things in the works for planning commission on Title forty-one. It's been nothing to reveal today.
And somebody was asking me, the Tim Hortons still on law, on, in progress, right?
Tim Hortons is.
Tearing down.
Being torn, tearing, torn down as we speak.
The Pizza Hut is.
The Pizza Hut.
The Pizza Hut, yeah, yeah, I better clarify, and, and, yes, and they have all their permits and everything's good to go, yeah.
Okay, that's good, because if they tear.
For donut lovers.
If we tear it down, then they won't be keeping saying where, where Pizza Hut used to be.
Okay, but now we're.
They're still going to say that.
That's, yeah, that's.
You just won't recognize the building shape.
There's one on Richland, too.
Yeah, so that could be the confusion. That's where the Pizza Hut used to be.
An opportunity for citizens to speak. Item's not covered on the agenda. Don't think we have such a thing. Our next meeting will be this seventh, and it will be at twelve noon, and having completed all of our business, we stand adjourned.
Okay, thank you.